The opening, it's 7 o'clock. We will start our meeting this evening. So please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We have quite the show out today, so I do really appreciate you. Good thing it's happening Tuesday and not tomorrow on the snow day. So thanks for coming out to Planning Commission. I want to give a little idea of how things are going to happen tonight because we have already had the public hearing that I imagine most of you are here for. We'll be taking action on it. We are moving now into what we call our Public Comments section. The Public Comments is a time that any citizen at any point in time that we have a Planning Commission meeting can come and share anything that they want with us, whether it's on the agenda or it's on your mind. We do ask that we are going to limit those public comments to five minutes because we have so many folks here this evening. I also would have a plan for how our public comments are going to go. I think most of you are here for our action item related to the property on Summit Ridge Road. Before I open public comments related to that topic, let me first see, are there any public comments that any citizen wants to share that is not related in any way, shape, or form to the rezoning and CUP related to Summit Ridge Road? Please come to the microphone if you have anything you want to share not related to our action item. Okay, I had a feeling that was the case, but I wanted to make space. All right, so here's what I would like to do. Normally, we don't kind of organize it, but I think there might be some, there were some questions that were asked last time, so what I would, and there were some updates to those. So what I would like to do is turn it over to our town staff to provide any updates to the application that would be relevant for everyone. So in case you did not have an opportunity to see those, we'll do that first. Then what I would like to do is open the public comments to anybody and everybody who wants to share something. We are going to hold fast to our five-minute time block tonight because there are so many folks, so I want to make sure people have time. If someone has already shared everything that you want to share, you may not feel the need to come up. If you're like, no, I still want to come up and say, I echo and repeat that because you want the numbers to support that, you're welcome to do that, but we ask that maybe you don't repeat what's already been said just so we can continue to move the meeting along. At the end, I'm going to make sure that everyone's had an opportunity to speak. What I would then like to do is turn over time to the applicant to address any additional questions or comments that you all might have, because there might be some additional questions that you all bring up this evening that have not already been addressed in the updated application. At that point in time, I'll give one more chance for any public comments. At that time, once public comments are closed, the comments are done for this evening. If you're at the last Planning Commission meeting, we were very free-flowing. We're really not supposed to be free-flowing like that. So tonight, we're going to be very strict so we can move forward. We will then move on to the next item, which is approval of our Planning Commission meetings, and then we're going to have our discussion as Planning Commissioners, at which point you all, I please encourage you to stay because you'll hear what our action is. But we will be back and forth asking questions, we'll be asking questions of our staff, we'll be asking questions of the applicant. So you will see the applicant come back up and address any questions or concerns we have, but at that time, your opportunity to speak has been closed. So we're not going to have conversations from the audience or the seats, we're not going to, more folks aren't going to come up to the microphone. So if you have something to share, I'm telling you now, please do it during the public comments because at that point in time, it's done. Are there any questions about this evening? Staff, is there anything that you want to add to our flow for this evening? Okay. And then, yes, Debbie, if you'll please come to the podium, use the microphone, yes, state your name and your address, but first, we'll start with staff. Planning Commissioners, any kind of discussion or things you want to share, we'll share that during our discussion action time, unless you want to approach as a citizen, not as a Commissioner. All right. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Since the public hearing at the last Commission meeting, February 3rd, there are several updates for the Commission. The applicant has provided a revised master plan dated February 12th, 2025, which has been included in your packet. In addition, the applicant provided the following related updates to their proffers and proposed conditions. Proffer and condition number one has been revised to read, "The property shall be developed in substantial conformance with the master plan submitted dated November 19th, 2024, and revised February 12th, 2025." Proffer and condition number three has been revised to read, "The few, the two future road connection locations shall be constructed and dedicated as shown on the master plan. The future road connection adjacent to Lot 11 shall be constructed in the first phase of development." Lastly, the applicant has added the following proffer and condition, number four. "An evergreen screening buffer will be planted along the eastern property line of the parent parcel with the exception of where trees would interfere with existing utilities or proposed public utility installation." At the last Commission meeting, there was a question regarding the proposed minimum lot area. There is some uncertainty as to what the intended minimum is. As the applicant's packet states, 7,000 square feet, but their master plan lists a minimum lot area of 7,500 square feet. At the public hearing, Planning Commission requested that staff provide information on the condition of Summit Ridge Road, along with any plans for paving or widening. Staff confirmed that there are no plans to pave or widen Summit Ridge Road in the near future. The pavement condition was rated good to excellent in the town's 2017 pavement condition inventory, and a site visit confirmed there are no current concerns regarding condition. At the same public hearing, Planning Commission requested that staff provide information on the condition of the existing water and sewer infrastructure in the area. The engineering and public works department said they are not aware of any concerns in the area. In response to a citizen's concern, staff looked into VDOT connectivity requirements for subdivisions, and the applicant provided a response as well. Given the proposed dubouts to future development, this proposed development appears to meet VDOT connectivity requirements. More information on this can be found in the applicant's rezoning revision letter dated February 12th, 2025. However, the 2021 Virginia statewide fire prevention code, Appendix D, Fire Apparatus Access Roads, requires two separate and approved fire apparatus access roads where the number of dwelling units exceeds 30. Town code requires that the town enforce this code, and the text of this is provided in your packet. That concludes the staff summary. Thank you for your time, and staff will be available to answer any questions.
At this time, I would love to invite you all to come to the podium. Again, our vice chairperson will be managing the five-minute timer. Please state your name and address and any comments you would like to share about anything. Please.
I'll break the ice. Greetings, Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. My name is David Bradshaw, and I live at 475 Summit Ridge Road, and I want to speak out against the proposed development as is. I think it's got some good points to it, but I do want to speak out against it. When I first look at it, the first impression is that it's very attractive, it's got a wonderful layout, it's got rolling hills, it's got curved roads, it's, it's got the excitement of new neighbors. We're a neighborhood-friendly community. This is exciting to think that we might have some new neighbors in there. But as it's proposed, we have some reservations about it, and we just need some clarity. We don't have any idea what's going in there. And so, once you get past the first impression, you get to your second impression, you start to see that, yeah, it's well-planned until you start looking at it in context with the other neighborhood, with our existing neighborhood, I should say. We still come down to a single access point. I'm not sure where the logic comes from in saying that these are connectors and access points, it still has traffic, but back here is the single entry point, and that's what we're concerned about, is the traffic load there, if you get into that. But we'll talk more about that in a little bit. But anyway, when I first look at this, I see, I see smaller lots, it alters the established character of the neighborhood. The higher density stands out against the surrounding lower-density development. And so, to me and to a lot of the people that are going to be here tonight, this raises a lot of serious questions that we feel that needs to be answered before the Commission makes a decision. As far as the impact on town and country estates, the way it stands, right now, the density is 82 lots and 42 acres, that's 1.9 lots per acre. That's reasonable, you've got some breathing room there, but the proposed development coming in is 60 lots and 18 acres, which is 3.3 acres per lot, and that comes directly from the document. The 3.3 is what they, they say they're at, the maximum can be at four, but we don't want to see that. We're already seeing a 74% denser community moving into this neighborhood on a single-point entry. And so, this concerns us. It concerns us when it comes to the sewer drains. There's an increased risk of capacity management, operation, and maintenance of the sewer system. You could have sanitary sewer overflows, you could have backflows into our homes, some of us have basements in there, and those concern us when you put that kind of development onto this. The retention ponds manage the surface runoff, but don't prevent the groundwater infiltration. This could lead to INI info, an infiltration into pipes, thereby increasing the costs for treating it. So it's, it's an older system. But one of the biggest concerns you're probably going to hear tonight are about the traffic concerns. Summit Ridge Road is a, is a key pedestrian and biking route. We're always out there walking our dogs, kids, whatever. We even have the Summit Ridge Bike Gang of the kids riding up and down the street, and it's a wonderful thing to see, and if you're going to add a bunch more homes on here, that concerns us. Here's an example of a map that I made. I'm a GIS guy. I like maps, I'm a visual guy. And so, the first thing I did when I saw the development after I got past the first and second, I said, well, how does this affect what's there? And so, what I did is I randomly picked four or five homes, in this case, I picked mine on 475. My house is like right there, and so I took existing footprints and I copied them onto this map with the setbacks, and not one of these homes will fit on any of these lots going in there. So right off the bat, that tells me it's going to change the community. And that's where I see the need and the importance of the cup. And if you read the conditions, I'm sure you all have read these things, and I'll just highlight what I want to do, is that they're to provide protection for surrounding properties, persons, and neighborhood values. And we just don't see that happening with what's being recommended here. If you look at the traffic impact, if approved, the 60 new homes as proposed would combine with the 72 existing homes, resulting in 32 homes. And that's going to put, once again, at that single point right there, it's going to bring the traffic capacities well over the 100, which is the benchmark that triggers a, a traffic impact analysis. And so, we're asking, because of Section 42625 of the town code, that we think that you need to require a full-blown traffic study of Summit, of all of Summit Ridge Road, because if you end up adding the 31 homes at the bottom of Summit Ridge when you first come in, that's going to add to the peak hours. And so, I went back and I looked at the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, and these are the numbers that it came up with when I put in 132 homes, that's if you don't have the bottom 31 homes, and if you put them in there, and it gets to those numbers. And I think that you have to look at the subdivision and this growth in its entirety. I don't think you can just look at it as adding 60 homes, because it's all going to come back down to here and then down here and what it's going to add. How am I doing on time?
30 seconds.
30 seconds, okay, well, gee whiz.
Someone can use the rest of your time if you want.
Let me go to this one real quick. I, I was able to take the GIS, and I took this polygon here, and I dissolved all the parcels in there, so I got a boundary here. I was able to take this boundary, copy it twice, cut it into different sections, and by the time I chopped it up and fitted in here, this slide tells me that the slide, that the density here is incredible. You got, you're trying to shove two Summit Ridge divisions, subdivision into this one parcel, if you're looking at it that way. The rest of the stuff I want to do, darn, I have never been one to run out of words.
So who wants the rest of my slides?
Thank you. Thank you.
May I self-identify as a second resident?
We can't do that, but if someone does want to come up, if you have worked with anybody and they would like to finish making the points, they are welcome to take their five minutes, whether they're in the same household or not, they can, another citizen. Who would else like to speak? State your name and address, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Mark Vest. I live at 360 Summit Ridge Road, and I'd also like to bring up a letter that my daughter had, has written, Finley. She says, "I really like to ride my bike and walk to the park. Love, Finley." So that leads into the, the issues that we somewhat identified, and that's a violation of Fire Code Section D 107.1, and that states that subdivisions with more than 31 or two-family dwellings and a single, on a single fire apparatus road must include a second approved access or approved sprinklers in every home. Currently, the dead-end portion of Summit Ridge has 15 homes. Adding 60 more would increase that number to 65, well above the 30-home threshold, and that's not if you include the very entrance of 360, that's the, if you don't include the Briarwood Drive turnaround. This is not a minor oversight, this is a violation of state, of state law and the Fire Code, which is in there for, for a reason. As we've seen this last week, we've had many trees down, we've had power lines down in our own neighborhood. This would effectively trap potentially over 100 people on that road should a fire truck not be able to get through there. The developer states that they intend to develop a section, second section of land. That land is currently not zoned, it's currently not owned by the same owner. I know they're familiarly related, however, they're, it's not zoned for development. Therefore, we can say Interstate 81 is supposed to be three-lane all the way through Winchester, and that probably won't happen in my lifetime. You can say that you're going to develop something, but we don't have a timeline for how that's going to be developed. Another concern of note is the narrowing of the roadway and turnaround in the proposed infrastructure. These are very small lots, and the setbacks do not allow for much driveway. If you have one car per home in this, in this area, you may be able to fit everybody in a driveway, but that's not a realistic thing. It's not a realistic thing in our neighborhood, there are cars parked on the, on the roadway, and it's already a fairly narrow roadway at the entry, and this would further trap traffic, fire apparatuses and everything. If you've ever driven a fire truck, you know how hard it is to maneuver around these things, and in an emergency, it can be even worse. They say the fire, the cul-de-sac meets the requirements. It does until you put a boat there, and you know that will happen. I mean, it's, this happens, these are communities, people live here, and people do things like that, even in violation of the law. I would strongly recommend the Commission require compliance with D 107.1 before approving the rezoning and the cup. The safety of our community is not a negotiable aspect. It's a significant danger to both us, the people walking through there, and the, the potential residents of this, of the, of this home. In order to ensure development should safely be added, I would recommend the project complete a full study of public safety and traffic impact prior to rezoning this, and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Very good.
Who else wishes to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Barbara Stepp, and I live at 765 Holly Drive off Summit Ridge Road, and tonight I'll discuss three main points: traffic flow, infrastructure readiness, and stormwater management, particularly in light of the comprehensive plans, environmental tools. Summit Ridge Road already serves over 100 homes, and the intersection at Summit Ridge and Briarwood have limited sightlines. Adding 60 new units could generate 120-plus daily vehicle trips, worsening the congestion at this already challenging intersection. At the top of the hill, near the intersection of Summit Ridge and Briarwood, there is a town-sponsored park. However, this park has only two to three parking spaces, which worsens the traffic and parking issues in the area. Additionally, four bus stops are in the Summit Ridge-Briarwood loop, further complicating traffic flow and safety. The Ridgewood Pool, located downhill to the right after turning on Summit Ridge onto Briarwood, causes significant traffic in the neighborhood during the summer months. This seasonal increase in traffic, combined with the existing challenges at that intersection, creates a dangerous situation for drivers, pedestrians, and cyclists alike. The intersection at Briarwood and Summit Ridge is particularly problematic because it goes uphill, requiring drivers to inch just past the stop sign to see where the traffic is coming. And this is a known issue that's been referenced in traffic reports and poses a significant safety risk. Teenagers, adults, even experienced drivers have struggled with this intersection, leading to near misses and accidents many times. The limited sightlines and steep incline make it difficult to navigate safely, especially during peak traffic hours or when the pool isn't used. Given the scale of this project, a full traffic impact analysis should be conducted now. This is a rezoning request, not a by-right development, even though the comprehensive plan designates the area for R1 use. The developer, who stands to benefit greatly from this rezoning, should fund the traffic study to ensure the successful future of the neighborhood. Now is the time to use the leverage of the rezoning process to address these critical issues. By requiring the developer to fund and complete a comprehensive traffic study, we can identify solutions that will enhance the safety and traffic flow for everyone. According to the town's 2022 infrastructure report, the existing sewer lines are operating at 85% capacity. Adding 60 new condition, connections could overwhelm the system, leading to backups and costly repairs. Environmental 2.13 of the debris development to reduce the runoff and environmental impacts. Yet, if these details are deferred to the site plan, we risk future burdens on taxpayers for lightning expansions or emergency fixes. Environmental 2 of the comprehensive plan emphasizes water quality, expanded use of green infrastructure, onsite infiltration. However, the proposal includes buying off-site nutrient credits instead of implementing robust onsite measures. While credits may fulfill the statewide regulation, they often fail to address local runoff, flooding, or erosion, and they do not advance Environmental 2.2's push for rain gardens, permeable pavement, or infiltration systems that benefit our immediate neighborhood. Because Summit Ridge sits on the Continental Divide, stormwater management is inherently complex. Defering design details until the site plan approval leaves neighbors and future homeowners at risk of flooding or other unmitigated impacts. Comprehensive Plan EV 2.12 and 2.13 clearly, clearly advocate addressing and improving stormwater infrastructure during or before rezoning for precisely these reasons. Therefore, we respectfully urge the Commission to recommend a now until the proposal includes a complete traffic, sewer, and stormwater plan that fulfills Environmental 2's priorities now, not later in the site plan phase. Our community's safety and sustainability depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you. [applause]
Hello, my name is Anna Bryan, I live at 225 Summit Ridge Road. This is my son Nolan. He enjoys playing and seeing his best friend across the street, Declan, and he wrote something that he wanted to say. Do you think you can read this?
I like to ride my bike on the road.
As.
As well.
I. As.
As.
Walk.
Walk with my family. And Nolan Bryan.
Nolan is six years old.
His best friend, Declan, lives across the street. He does have mild autism, and part of his symptoms are eloping, so he tends to run across the street to see his friend, Declan, which is extremely scary. And so, we were very scared when we heard about all of the new traffic that might be coming to the neighborhood. It's, 60 houses is a lot. Our family has two cars, and so, thinking about each household possibly having two cars at least would be 120 cars on our road, and it's hard for people to see little ones running around, and we enjoy walking in the summertime and springtime, whenever the weather is nice, and thinking about the traffic is really concerning. And so, yeah, I just wanted to bring up my concerns about possibly having, if, if the neighborhood does expand to that extent, having speed bumps on both ends of the park so that it slows traffic down at the intersection of the park, which is where we live, as well as possibly having three-way stop signs at Rogers and Summit intersection. I think that would be really helpful in slowing things down, but thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jackson Friend, and I live at 340 Summit Ridge Road. I've lived on this street most of my life, and growing up here, I've always felt safe going around the roads and hanging out with my friends and just doing stuff on the street. I'm part of the CHS cross-country and track team, and we do a lot of training, and it's hard for me during the winter and the summer when I have to get my mileage, and if there's more traffic on the street, it'll be a lot less safe for me to do my runs, and it's not easy to access other places on the street because we live near North Franklin, and it's a very busy street, and it's very hard to get across, especially if you're not experienced in getting across streets and the safety of it. So it'll be hard for me with more traffic to safely get my runs in, in the off-seasons when I don't run with the team. Also, I enjoyed to skateboard around the neighborhood with my friends, and all the people on our street are really nice about it, and we have good drivers, but if we get more people on the street, it could be a lot more dangerous for people to do stuff like riding bikes or skateboarding. Another concern I have is the pool. I live right by the Ridgewood Pool when you turn right, and already with the turn, it's a kind of dangerous way to walk, and adding more traffic is just going to make it harder because it's kind of like a blind side, and cars kind of go down it really fast, and it could be a struggle to get down there with even more traffic than there already is, and it could be not safe, especially because I have a younger brother and sister that are not experienced, as experienced as I am, going down streets and watching for cars and stuff, and it could be really dangerous for them to get down to the pool safely without getting hit or getting close to being hit. Another, I just enjoy walking around the neighborhood, walking my dog, and it's, it could be hard, especially my dog is not very good at walking, and it could be really hard if he starts pulling on the leash and stuff, if there's lots of traffic for me to get around the neighborhood safely. And I'm really hoping that we can just kind of figure out a way to fix the traffic because I'm, I really enjoy running and getting my training in, and I don't want to have to worry about getting hit by a car while I'm out on my runs. So I'm really hoping that we can try and fix it and get some better ways to keep it safe around the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Hello, my name is Grant Foster. I live at 195 Briarwood Drive. I have a wife, Ashley, and I have two young boys, nine and five. We're one of many families on Briarwood and Summit Ridge that have children, and they do, like everybody says here, I feel like it's a broken record at this point, but they like to play outside. They love, you know, to go up and down the, the street, go, and right now, we feel comfortable, you know, sending our kids four, five, 10 houses down to go hang out, you know, hey, run out the house, come back when the lights turn on. You know, you add 120 cars when this thing's all said and done, which is an extremely low estimate, you know. Two, two, two-car families are almost non-existent anymore. And right now, we feel comfortable, you know, sending our kids four, five, 10 houses down to go hang out, you know? Hey, run out the house, come back when the lights turn on. You know, you add 120 cars when this thing's all said and done, which is an extremely low estimate, you know? Two-car families are almost non-existent anymore, you know? By the time my kids are driving, we'll have four, you know? And many of these other people will have five, six cars when it's all said and done. It's a glorified one-lane road. I don't know if anybody's been there, I'm sure you have. The pool, you know, we're a few houses down. We like to walk there during the summertime. It just adds a lot of issues with, you know, especially when they're doing construction. I come from a construction background. Not that they should, but they don't care about the kids, they care about getting their job done. You know, you can tell them, you can give them all the safety info that you want, but when it's all said and done, they're trying to get their bottom line. And that's getting it done on time, and, you know, they're going to be running up and down that road as fast as they possibly can. And you might be able to find them, but they'll do it again. And it seems like there's a couple, I'm not opposed to this plan at all whatsoever. The way that it sits is beautiful. If you came in from another way, good to go. Come in from Life Drive, I'm sure you can broker a deal with whoever owns that property. And it's already set up, so you've got a two-lane wide road, you know, and there, you don't pass one house to the entrance of this new subdivision. As it sits, you're going to pass, I wrote it down here, you're going to pass 60 homes getting into the new subdivision. You're going to pass 60 homes going in through Summit Ridge to get to the subdivision. You know, I do believe that the open space and the green space that they've got allocated in the plans are non-existent. I think at one point, they put in here that according to the Town of Christiansburg zoning ordinances, there's no specific amount of open space required for R1 zoning districts. It's anticipated that the homeowners will utilize their own lots for space as each will, you know, I mean, that's not a park, that's not outdoor space. And as is right now, what yard do you have to play in? You know, when you get a driveway in there, and the way that the lot sizes are, it's compacted like sardines. You move to Christiansburg, I grew up in Blacksburg, I moved to Christiansburg because it's quaint. It reminds me of Blacksburg, you know, 35 years ago, and we all see what Blacksburg is today, and I'd hate to see that happen because then you're going to see a lot of people move out, like I did. And I love Christiansburg, I love the community, I've been, I coached football in the community, and I'd like to see it grow in the right way. So I will take that as my time, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing these collective concerns that we have as a community.
Would you mind stating your name and address, please?
That's what I should do, right?
I didn't want to interrupt.
My name is Bruce Jennings. I live at 365 Summit Ridge Road. And we believe that Summit Ridge, the rezoning and Cup as it's currently proposed should be denied. However, we also believe that there is a path forward that aligns with the comprehensive plans and protects the community's safety, environment, and the quality of life. Now, here are some of the practical steps that we feel could address the ENV 2 and ENV 3 and other critical aspects of the comprehensive plan. Now, number one, we've already addressed, so I'm not going to repeat and go through the whole thing like you desire, but fire code D 107.1, I think, has been thoroughly discussed already by previous residents here. Number two, the reasonable density. The limited density, we need to limit the density of around 30 total houses on the dead-end portion of this existing R1 pattern. Now, this reduces the risks of runoff, overcrowding, life safety concerns, while maintaining the suburban character of our neighborhood. Number three is the comprehensive traffic and utility study. I'm not going to go into that, that was already, again, already explained, the desire, but I just want to emphasize the importance of the traffic impact analysis. Number four is the real onsite stormwater measures. Incorporate a green infrastructure per ENV 2.3, such as rain gardens, permeable pavement, bioswales, and infiltration basins, rather than relying on the offsite nutrient credits. Now, ensure that the final designs align with ENV 2.13, calling for a reduced runoff at rezoning and preventing additional burdens on the existing neighborhood. For example, the developer could integrate a series of rain gardens along the property to maintain the stormwater locally and enhance the community's aesthetics. And last is the sustainability and quality of life we're concerned with. We want to preserve the open space and buffer zones, the wooded areas, and protect the water quality and retain the local character as suggested in NRV, or ENV 2.17, which addresses the tree canopy retention, and ENV 3.1, which is talking about the dedicated open spaces. Now, recognize that the comprehensive plan's directives for open spaces in new subdivisions ensuring that the future residents can employ community-friendly spaces. Now, specifically, the developer should include a town park as part of the green space requirements. This park could serve as a central gathering point for residents in providing recreational opportunities and enhancing the quality of life for both the current and future homeowners. Now, by adopting these measures at this stage, the project can create a safer, more sustainable neighborhood while truly upholding the Town's comprehensive plan. Now, this is not just about avoiding problems, it's about creating a development that enhances our community and sets a standard for reasonable growth. Otherwise, we maintain that the Commission should recommend denial of the rezoning of the Cup. The health, safety, and welfare of the community must come first. We trust that you will prioritize these values and uphold the standards of the comprehensive plan. Thank you for your commitment to the Town's future, especially in enforcing the goals of the comprehensive plan and before the site plan stage. Now, together, we can ensure the growth benefits everyone, not just a few. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
But if you could do it at the microphone, so it's on the recording, please.
Just your question for formality, is there just going to be a chance for us to ask questions of you all or of the developer?
At this time, this is the time for you to say anything, and if you have questions or comments that you want to be addressed, now would be the time to say them. And then what we're going to do is we're going to ask the applicant to share any updates that he has, and maybe even a response to the questions that you have. But we have been taking notes of a lot of the things that you all have been bringing up. We, as Commissioners, are very likely going to ask those questions.
Could I just, can I come back up and ask a question then? Is that?
Once we close, the public comments were done from the citizens.
But you haven't closed it yet.
I have not closed it yet.
So may I ask a question?
What's your, hold on, let me, let's wait for some other citizens to make their comments.
Well, I have something that hasn't been addressed, I would like to ask.
Okay, let's see if some other folks have some comments, and then what we'll do is, because when I do ask you to come up, the public comments are not going to be done after he speaks, so there will be more time to make any additional statements.
That's exactly what I wanted to know. You had said that once Mr. Simoni speaks, we will have a chance to speak again.
Yep, there'll still, there'll be one more final chance. So if there's anything else that you.
That's when I would come back and ask my question.
Do you have, just give me a second, let me see if there's anybody else. Go, please, please come to the podium. Let's just see how the time goes, and then I'll come back to you, okay?
My name is Suella Wolf. I live at 175 Campbell Lane. Campbell Lane is one of two streets in the Kingston Court subdivision that we are nearby Summit Ridge. In fact, we kind of intersect with Summit Ridge. And what I want to address is the traffic concerns with the construction traffic. This is a huge development that is being proposed, and already, as I sent you some information on it, that the Absolute Construction Company, which is owned by the developer's family, has already established their business at the end of Summit, I mean, Campbell, which to my knowledge is still zoned agriculture, it could have changed. But we are inundated with construction traffic. We're a narrow street, just like Summit Ridge. We have families, we have no sidewalks, we have people who frequently park on the side of the street because of necessity or visitors, and those large construction vehicles that come daily, morning, afternoon, throughout the day, they're delivering material, they're picking up material, so forth. They can't pass another vehicle. We have emergency vehicles. Yesterday, my next-door neighbor, they had to call a rescue squad. And there is just, this construction traffic is a hazard as it is right now. They can't pass another vehicle because of the size of the street. One of my neighbors actually was walking her dog, and I had to pick up the dog because it's, one of the construction vehicles swerved, almost, almost hit, literally almost hit them. And can only imagine what this is going to do, the number of, we'll go back up here and say, no doubt, this absolute construction will be heavily involved, since it's family, and the number of construction vehicles that will be on our street because of the location of the business, and then also, of course, moving right on up into, onto Summit Ridge. It's, there's a safety, there's a real safety issue as far as we're concerned, because we, people walk in the summertime particularly, you see people, plenty, there's no other route for our street, and the street right behind us, it's also part of our subdivision, Baldwin, and Summit Ridge residents to walk to the park, the Ridge, which is a town park on Summit Ridge, and it's not fenced. The Summit, I'm sorry, on, then also Ridge Wood Swim Club, and not only just traffic from the, our neighborhood and the Summit Ridge neighborhood, but Huff Acres, a large subdivision right across Franklin. We have a lot of people, kids, who walk to the, to the pool and the park through our subdivisions. And there is, there's really a safety concern that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens? I'll come back to you. Please.
My name is Don Peters, and I live at 455 Summit Ridge Road. That's the dead-end part of Summit Ridge. And just sitting back there, it occurred to me that the lighting on Summit Ridge, at least where I am, is inadequate. When you pull out in the dark morning or dark evening, you don't see well. And I should think that if there's going to be an increase of traffic with this new development, definitely the lighting should be looked into on Summit Ridge. And I think there are probably other parts of the road, too. In fact, I know there are other parts of the road that are pretty dark. So I think lighting should be considered, no matter what the decision ends up being. And you said earlier about seconding everybody. I second everything that's been said tonight. Thank you very much.
Any other new citizens to speak?
Hi, my name's Amanda Kundal. I live at 190 Summit Ridge Road, and I've lived there for five years with my son Declan. And he goes to the park often, and across the road to see his friend Nolan, who you saw earlier. I think that my biggest concern is our driveway is a circular driveway, so people turn around in our driveway often, very often. It is a big turnaround spot, and I don't mind it for the most part, but it will be probably more used if there is an increase in traffic. And also, other concerns, there aren't sidewalks. He rides the bus, so we, if he, we used to have to walk to the bus stop, there's no sidewalks. Even now, if they pass us up because they don't see us, we still have to walk up the road to the sidewalk, which we don't mind doing, but there's no sidewalk to walk on. And it is a really narrow street, even now, I'll have to wait for cars passing due to cars being parked on the side of the road, which is a huge problem. But I imagine with the increase of traffic, it probably will be more of a nuisance in a way. But yeah, I guess that's basically all of our concerns, is the increase of traffic and the safety of our kids and others that walk there. I see kids running, or people walking on it every single day, and especially whenever it is really nice outside. We like to go on walks around the neighborhood, and we frequent the park often. We're two minutes away from it, we can see it from our house, and that's one of the reasons why we love living there. It's a beautiful neighborhood, and I just, yeah, I just kind of want to keep it as less congested as possible, I guess. But thank you for your time. Did you want to say anything? He has something to say.
What do I have to say?
Well, you don't have to say anything. I just asked you if you wanted to say something. Do you want to say how much you like going to the park?
A thousand times.
All right, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, you make, if you have another question?
It's not a statement, it's a question.
Yes, if you want to, go ahead. We'll make a note of your question, if you just come to the podium.
If there's a time for questions to the developers.
So now's the time. So if you have a question, before we hand it, this would be a time, so he can note any questions that I have. What would be your question?
Not making a statement here, but I will make a statement in that I had fun learning a lot about our ordinances and Town Council codes. And in doing so, I came across Section 42-96 dealing with frontages. It says the minimum lot width at the setback line of the street shall be 80 feet. I realize that that's being asked as a variance, I'm not questioning that, but Section B of that says all structures in this district shall be located on a lot with a front of the structure facing the front lot line. Well, I don't know if you've looked at Ms. Ridingers' house, it's facing the back, it's backwards. If you look at the map, the house is facing towards lots 44, 43, 42, and 41. So that alone, right there, is going to probably either cause some lots to be changed or the road to be redesigned. And so my question is, is that enough to say these plans are invalid because you've got some serious road issues to handle? So that's my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other citizens' comments before we turn over the applicant? Yes?
I'm Denise Alston Altheiser, and I live at 85 Summit Ridge Road. And something I don't think I've heard addressed, if it has been, I apologize, but I live at the bottom of Summit Ridge as you go out onto Franklin, and you, the increased traffic, it's already pretty bad sometimes getting out there onto the main road with the traffic coming from the pilot area and the traffic. and the traffic going to the pilot area. And with the increased traffic coming down there, I think that that needs to be addressed. Also, if you come off of Campbell trying to get onto Franklin, there is basically a kind of a blind spot there. So as there's some woods and a curve there. So I think that that's something that needs to also be addressed as probably a traffic issue. Thank you very much.
Any other citizens' comments? Steve, oh, no, please, go ahead.
Carrie Bradshaw, 475 Summit Ridge Road. Mine is a question. I would like to ask the Planning Commission to consider another entry point that is not Summit Ridge Road.
Do you have a recommendation?
I would think the property at Life Bible College be developed. There's also Lubna.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments? If you don't mind Steve coming to the front. So the way this is going to work, because we're going to ask that he address many of the comments and questions, we're going to give him more than five minutes because we want to make sure that he has an opportunity to address the concerns that you all have had. And then if there's any additional updates that maybe you have in your application that the staff has not had a chance to cover, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. Steve Simone is of Baldwin Associates. I think if it'd be okay, Chair, I'd like to go through our presentation, which I think would answer, I think, some of the confusion. And it touches on traffic, touches on the fire code. And then I'll try to address the notes I made and just touch them, if that's okay.
Thank you.
So I'm just going to go ahead. Devin brought up a couple of the changes. You know, one of the things we heard from Mr. Wilburn, who lives right here, was asking about, you know, evergreen buffers. So we did come back and provide the evergreen buffers that you see along this property line right here. You'll see a gap right there. That's where we have to bring our sewer, our sewer line through. So that's why we had that little caveat in the proffer statement about public infrastructure. When the existing Summit Ridge subdivision was designed, side yard easements were not put in place. So while this is sanitary sewer right there, we can't physically get there through that side yard because there's not an existing easement. So the neighbors would have to grant that easement. So that's why we're coming along this way. But there are existing easements in place along the rear yards and the front yards of all those lots. This was brought up at the last meeting as well, kind of wanting to see what the lots, what the houses look like. We've got that typical house footprint, as we discussed at the meeting a couple of weeks ago. That's, that's a typical, if you're going to do one-level living. So that's the footprint you see here in a couple of different locations in purple. So this is with the setbacks that we currently have shown, which are enough for two cars side by side, as well as the garage space. And I threw some dimensions off the back, again, because as I mentioned, you know, I wanted to be sure you all saw what I said in the meeting was true, is that these, these houses are not bumping right up against the setback lines. So the reason we've, we've designed it the way we did is to give some flexibility. This is, again, a one-level living opportunity. But if somebody on the bigger lots wants to put a two-story house in with a smaller, shallower footprint, they could do that. But you can see in some of our smaller lots here, that's 33 feet. And I believe in a standard R1 lot, it's 35 feet for a rear yard setback. So very close to meeting that standard there. I think our tightest is up here around lots 21. So we've got 28 feet. But you know, a lot of our lots here in the middle, which are the ones that are very similar in depth to Summit Ridge, that are not as wide. Summit Ridge is, is almost, those lots are .4 to .5 acres. Those are, those are big lots. We don't design lots that big anymore. The town, the R1 code in town has a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. That's a quarter of an acre. So if we designed it by right in this, that's a quarter-acre lot. So we're just not designing lots. The, the market doesn't demand lots that big anymore that we did back in the, in the 80s when, when the subdivision next door was put in. But I do want you to, again, see, you know, there is room in these houses, on these lots, for people to have some outdoor space. And we talked about some of the other, some of the other developments in town that have happened over the years. New River Village, some of the terrace lots at Kensington, some of the smaller lots we've looked at. Vinnie Avenue, you know, that was a patio home. You've seen a lot of patio home layouts over the last couple of years as well. So there is a demand for that type of use because it's something that, again, as we've talked about, keeps your prices down. If you stick a 2,000-square-foot house on a half an acre a lot, you know, Ms. Hours can tell you, you're looking at $500,000 plus. You know, you're not going to hit something that's affordable, you know, in that $300,000 to $400,000 range, which is just not out there right now. The days of, and we all know, the days of a $200,000 new house are long gone. Construction costs and interest rates and everything else have kind of taken that by the wayside. But I did want you all to see how the houses would sit on the lots. I thought that was important. I want to talk about the access. And I included some of this information in your packet, but I wanted to show some diagrams as well. So to back up to 2009, VDOT put in access management regulations that went through the state guidelines and set, basically, there was a ratio on how many connections you had to have out of a subdivision, based on the number of lots and acreage and the other things. In 2011, they revised that. It was really hard to follow. It was hard for developers and engineers to kind of figure out which the best way to connect was. In 2011, they, they revised that to the SSAR guidelines, which I've got, got here. So that's a guideline that was put out in 2011 and is continuously updated. But this is, this is where it's important. This is what I mentioned the other night, is that VDOT doesn't, you know, and the town follows VDOT regulations. For the most part, they can make them more strict if they'd like to, but they've got to follow VDOT regs in order to get their maintenance funding from VDOT as a town, you know, for town streets. So with this, with this SAR guideline, what it says is, any subdivision from 0 to 200 lots. So remember that 200 lot piece, and we'll talk about that. But from 0 to 200 lots has to have two means of connectivity. One can be, and it lists it right here, a physical link with an existing street in the VDOT network, construction of a stubout for a future or current connection, or construction of a stubout to a future network addition within the same development. So that would be if you're doing a phased development, you could do a stub road. You could connect into one road and do a stub road into your next phase of your development, and that meets the SAR guidelines. Every, from 200 to 300 lots, you've got to add another one. From 300 to 400, you've got to add another one. So it steps up one connection every 100 lots above 200. Or you can look at it with the trips per day. So 200 dwelling units or 2,000, I'm sorry, 2,000 trips per day. 2,000 trips per day, you know, it's, it's basically the ITE manual, the trip generation manual is, I think it's 9.74 trips for a single-family home. So that takes into account, as Mr. Foster was saying, you know, if you've got more people than just, just two, two people with a car, you know, you've got kids with a car, you're running kids out to daycare or to soccer practice. So it's more trips over the course of the day. But 2,000 vehicles per day is a lot of, of traffic coming out of a bigger subdivision. So that's over a 200, you know, 200 lot subdivision. So if a new development, and this is another piece I thought was important, if a new development is built, which abuts a VDOT maintained stubout, which would be Summit Ridge Road, the street network of the new development must connect to the stubout for its streets to be eligible for acceptance into the secondary system. You are required to connect to a stubout road in order for your development to be accepted into the state system or in the town system for this, you know, in this situation. So these are examples in the guideline book. So, and it was really interesting because this is very similar to the layout and to the development we've got right now. So these connectivity examples up here, so this would be one. So I think that says 120 lots right there. So that would be less than 200, but it's in, you know, that 0 to 200 mark. So you'd need two connections. There's one to the existing road and a future stubout. This doesn't meet it because it's just the one connection point. So again, that's the reason you don't want to do cul-de-sacs everywhere. You need those other connections. This is really the example I wanted to show you because this is, again, very similar to Summit Ridge. You know, you've got the first phase of the development right here. So this had 2,500 vehicles per day. So that's a lot bigger than what the existing Summit Ridge is right now. But they have three connections shown. So, you know, one at the main road, one to the adjacent property, and one to some future development. The next one comes in as 179 units. Two connections are required. Connect to the existing road and then a stubout to the existing, to the existing, or to the next phase over. And then it goes on, 622 dwellings, it needs five, and it shows the five there. So if you look at Summit Ridge, okay, there's Summit Ridge as it exists today. One, two, three, it meets it, it more than meets it. They only needed two. They've got it. Our piece right here, 60 lots, needs two. We've got one, two, three. So across, if you add all these lots up, everybody that uses Summit Ridge, and I think I had it in my information to you guys, a total of 163. And I was counting off of GIS, so I might be a few off. And that's including the townhouses and some of the duplexes down here in the front section. But about 163 total residential units. So again, if you take all of this, the whole piece, even if we build out, they still only need two. And between all of us, we've got five. And even if you took the connection away, it's still four. So it, it not just meets it, it exceeds by double what's required by the subdivision guidelines. So that's an important piece I wanted to share. I guess it was Friday, we, we got copied on an email that one of, one of our neighbors here sent about the statewide fire prevention code. And try to follow me here, this might be a little confusing, but try to follow me. So the Department of Housing and Community Development sets a board called the Board of Community, or Board of Housing and Community Development. That, that board sits in Richmond, it's appointed by the governor. I actually served on that board for eight years for our district, for the 9th Congressional District. Those are the folks that basically go through the, the building codes, the fire codes, the plumbing codes, every single code cycle. So the code cycle just updated in 2021. Those just the, it's weird, it's like, it's, it's several years behind the way the codes work. It's typically two years behind. If you're in 2023, you'd be using the 21 code. But COVID messed things up and some other things. So we just kicked into the 21 code, I believe. That's, that's correct, Mike.
Yeah, it was a.
It was optional until sometime in January. Now you have to go 21.
Yeah, January 13th or 18th, the new codes kicked in. So what that means is, is there's the, the building code, there's the residential building code that, that, you know, a builder has to build a home by. There's the commercial code that you're going to build apartment, apartment buildings and commercial structures, too. And there are all these other codes, and the statewide fire prevention code is one of them. And, and I apologize, it's hard to see here. And I didn't bring my glasses either, so I can't even read it off my page here. But this is, there, there are a couple of pieces of this that, that's important. And I confirmed this with one of our state representatives in Richmond, to be sure I was still understanding it correctly. So the statewide fire prevention code, as it's adopted, is only for maintenance and operations of existing buildings. So it's not a new construction building code. It's real, that's, that's really important to say. The fire code itself is a guideline. So the state can decide, you know, the board, the Board of Housing and Community Development can decide through their code cycle regulations what portions of a code to adopt into the full state code. So if you read this, "The 2021 code update cycle removed construction requirements from the model code based on, based, or I'm sorry, model code used as a basis for the Virginia statewide fire prevention code." Virginia state law scopes the statewide fire prevention code for maintenance and operation regulation only. So what that means is if I'm going to go and do a renovation to this building, I've got to follow the fire code, you know, for sprinkler systems and means of egress. If I owned a fireworks store and I wanted to store fireworks or hazardous material in my building, I have to follow the statewide fire prevention code because that's operations. So as Devin mentioned, in the fire code, in the town's fire code, it says, "It follows this." And they do, the town follows this. But they follow this from a maintenance, maintenance and operation standpoint, not new construction. So the second piece of the fire code, this is Appendix D, this is the, the link that was included in that email, right up here in a big red note. And I'm going to walk up, I'm going to move the podium. Because again, I'm sorry, I can't, can't read it. "The provisions of this appendix are not part of this code. They are provided only as a resource for local government in consideration of the adoption of local fire prevention regulations." So the appendices, or the appendix isn't even part of the code. So it's, it's there as a guideline, it's there as a regulation. If you've got a rural fire code or a rural fire department or a fire safety department that needs guidance, that wants to adopt these full regulations, they can. But the way the town of Christiansburg's code is written in the fire safety, it adopts the fire safety code and it says it adopts the appendices. But it's only for maintenance and operation. If it's new construction, like what we're talking about right now in the appendices for the, for the fire access, this 30 lots, which you scroll down and it's in there, D107, is not applicable to the town of Christiansburg. So, and I, I know that's confusion because that's not what we've, what, what we've heard. But that, that is code. That is, that is true. We, we ran that by one of our state representatives yesterday. Again, I confirmed that, to be sure nothing had changed, and, and that is truly the case. So we can, we can have some further discussion about that. But from a new construction subdivision guideline, that code does not, it, it doesn't affect what we're, what we're building here. And I think it's important also to look at, and I've got it noted here. If it, if it was, if it was, we've got a number of subdivisions just here within the last several years that would have been approved and permitted in violation of this. So the Clifton subdivision, Slate Creek Commons, before the Vinnie Avenue project came in and tied that, tied that road in, that was, and these, these are all streets that have one way in and are over 30 lots. New River Village didn't have a second way in until just recently when we started the apartments. Clifton subdivision, Slate Creek Commons, Seneca Springs, Alder, the existing Alder Lane subdivision back behind Windsor. The New Meadows development that Eagle Construction and Shaw Development are building. Winsong Heights, most of Diamond Point. So it's, it's a guideline, but the town has other standards involved to allow for public access for fire and safety. We've got wider streets, we've got other emergency access points. So again, I'm just trying to make the point that there is a code. It does sit in the, in the state, in the state code. But it's not part of new construction for what we're looking at in, in this scenario. Couple of the other questions I wanted to address here, you know, from, from the neighbors. We've talked about traffic. We have to provide the same traffic data to the town on every rezoning and every conditional use permit. If the, whenever we have done that and the town says we're concerned about traffic, that Town Engineering Department will ask us to perform a traffic impact analysis or even a minor traffic study to look at turn lanes or intersection improvements. And they tell us that before we get to this point tonight. So if that was a concern from town staff and the engineering department, if it was throwing some sort of red flag up that these additional 60 lots in the subdivision were going to create big traffic issues, whether it be on Summit Ridge or at the intersection of Franklin, we would have been asked to provide that documentation, you know, prior to coming to Planning Commission for a public hearing. Stormwater management, I, I appreciate the neighbors looking at the comprehensive plan and the environmental sections. We look at that with every application we put in. And we address how we're looking at some of those certain items within there. The stormwater management, we never designed stormwater management at the rezoning phase. We don't have the, the site fully engineered, you know, it, site, the rezoning is a master plan. You know, it's, it's the master plan. Now, we're proffering it, you know, it's going to be built in substantial conformance with this. But we don't have all the footprints figured out. We don't have all the driveways, all the interior sidewalks figured out. So we can't design stormwater. But what's important to show also is that if you look at the topography, there's a break right here. And we talked about this the other night as well. So the, the existing house sits up on the knoll. And you can see the contours as they break, and, and some of this does break back down into Summit Ridge. What we'll be doing as part of this development is we'll be picking up all this water along this, every time that battery dies when I'm talking. What we'll end up doing is we'll have, we'll have ditch lines going along lots 60, 30- What we'll end up doing is we'll have ditch lines going along lots 60, 34, and 33 to take all this water that's coming off of our site into the stormwater management facility here, and the same thing here. This kind of fall, already falls back down to the adjacent property. But roof leaders, downspouts, all that would be directed away from Summit Ridge and get into our stormwater management facilities. So those stormwater management facilities will not drain onto Summit Ridge, that will have to be detained and drain off to the south. This one will have to be detained and will drain out to the interstate right away. So stormwater will be handled as required by state and local codes, and we haven't designed or shown anything preliminarily that would have any negative impact on Summit Ridge at all. If anything, it's taking water that's hitting them right now and taking it away from their Traffic, let's see. Ms. Wolf brought up Kimball. Mr. Woody's son does own that property, but Absolute Construction is not a part of this application. It's a completely separate company, they don't work together, doing business together. So that's completely separate. What happens on Kimball Lane has nothing to do with this project. The Peter, the Peter's comment about lighting. Lighting along the streets, I believe, is a determination between AEP and the town. If additional streetlights would want to go up on Summit Ridge Road, that's not on us. We would have, we would be responsible for any streetlights that meet town code and AEP requirements in our subdivision, but any other lighting along Summit Ridge, I know there have been other subdivisions in Christiansburg over the years that have reached out to the town or to AEP to have new streetlights put in. That's something certainly the neighbors could address with town council or engineering. I'm not even sure, Devin or Rheta, who they would talk to locally, but, or in here in town, but they can make that suggestion to the town. Two other points, I think, because we heard a lot about traffic and we're aware of that. I did want to show that we do have, we talked about sidewalks last time, so all of, you know, the new roads would have sidewalks on them. The existing house itself, we think that's a good thing to keep it. It's an existing nonconformity, the short side of the lot is your frontage. So right now, it would either need to be facing this way, or this way, but it's usually the front side that's facing a public street, which would be Summit Ridge. So it's already nonconforming. We didn't feel like keeping the lot as it stands today and keeping the trees was a bad thing at all. We thought that was a good thing. I mean, we can knock the house down, and we could pick up three more lots in there. So the idea was to keep the house. The house is being rented right now, the people love the house, and they want to buy the house when the subdivision's done. So we've got people that are living there that want to be homeowners in the town of Christiansburg, we think that's a, we think that's a good thing. And then I believe it was Ms. Bradshaw that had the last comment about Lubna, or Life. So Lubna is the one, I can't change the screen now, but is the one just to the south, maybe go to the overall, Devin, I'm not sure if it'll show it. Yep. So Lubna's down here. We can't, you all can see the grade here, there's no way to get a public street, to public street standards from a grade standpoint off this hill, down that way. So I mean, making that connection's not physically possible from an engineering perspective. Life, you know, as I mentioned, if Life Bible College, if they ever redevelop, there's certainly a possibility because they'd be able to connect into the stub that we're showing at the end of ours. But that's a private development. Their roads right now, I don't think any of their roads, maybe a portion of Life Drive might be public right away, I'm not sure, but certainly not up through their parking lots. So that's building probably half a mile maybe of road to up to state standards. So I mean, that's a little far and beyond what, you know, I feel like we should be asking, you know, a piece of property that's got access, you know, deeded access to a public road that's set up to be the next phase of the development as it was originally plotted for Summit Ridge. So that's certainly a future connection. The future connection we showed right here, this area right, you know, in here, just between the steepness, the, kind of the toe of the slope here, and our property line could be developed sometime in the future. And again, if we're stubbing out to those property lines, they're required, as I showed you in those other slides, they're required to connect into it in order for those streets to be taken into the public system.
It's a power line, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You can't go under it, I guess.
You can go under, yeah, you could go under it. You couldn't put any, you couldn't put any houses within those easements, but you could put a road and, you know, you could put parking lots under them, but you wouldn't have your house under them.
Are we allowed to ask questions, Devin?
No, he's still going.
So I think that's, I think that's it. I mean, those are the big points I wanted to touch on, to be sure, you know, it was clear as far as the code for the SSAR, clear in the fire code piece of it, and then some of the other revisions we made to come back based on what we had heard last week. I'd be happy to answer any clarifications you all have right now, or I'll sit back down and...
You can go ahead and have a seat, because when we get to the planning commission time, we'll have questions for you. All right, so here's what's going to happen. You're not allowed to ask the applicant any questions. We, as commissioners, I have no doubt, I have pages of notes and questions to ask. So we, in just a moment, I'm going to close the public comments. We will then have conversation, we'll ask staff questions, we'll ask Steve questions, we'll go back and forth. So at this point, if you have any final things that you want us to consider, you are welcome to come to the podium, address the commissioners for us to take into consideration, but please do not directly address the applicant. So if you have anything you want to share in response to that, we are happy to consider that before we close. Yes, please. I will allow a five-minute reset, since I'm going to allow for final comments.
Okay. I don't know if I got my slides back, or can I go back to those, or probably not.
If it is, yeah. What else should we consider? Say your name again for us and address.
David Bradshaw, Summit Ridge, 475 Summit Ridge Road. I still have questions about the master plan here with VDOT and the SSAR. It just seems not to pass the sniff test, first of all. I'm not sure how you can say you've got all these entrances to a place that it still only has, and I don't have a pointer anymore. But if I was to point, I'd point at that big red star that I thought to put in at the last second. That's still the single entry point. I don't care if you have little dots going all over the map that says we've got all these different places you can exit. I've lived there 25 years, there are folks here who've lived here a lot longer than me, I bet you a few rest of hands to show up, there'd be a lot that would go up. And we haven't seen any development go in there in 25 years, and we don't have any expectations of that ever being built out for these little stubs. There are stubs to nowhere. And it just, to me, doesn't pass the realistic test of all the concerns that folks have voiced about traffic. I wish they had put a cul-de-sac there. I wish Ms. Writinger had sold me one acre of land at the corner of that, and I would have blocked it off, but we can't do that. But to consider that these stubs count, it doesn't do anything to address the traffic problem. It's just out there that may happen someday. Oh, thanks. I don't know if I need it right now, but thank you. So there's that, and then the other piece I wanted to mention, and I totally lost my train of thoughts. Oh, I'll go back to the Writinger house. Fine, it was built back then, and it faced its own way. We didn't have those codes and items to address the direction of a house. We do now. You're building a new subdivision here, and things in my world have to be brought up to code, right? If I'm going to do something in my house, I have to bring it up to code if I'm going to break something up. And so that's an example where I think that needs to be brought up to code, and I think the road going into there needs to be addressed to say, this is the front of that lot, because this is the direction of the house, because that particular code, whatever I read out earlier, and I don't even have that note in front of me anymore, but what was it, section 42-96, section B, or part B, says that all structures have to face the road frontage. So to me, that's a critical element, and I think it does change how the roads go in there, and that might be a delaying tactic that we can use to get some more time to understand what's going on here. And furthermore, I'd want to say is that the conditional use permit is not a right, it's a privilege. It's used to control development so that it matches what's in the surrounding area. You can talk all sorts of little footprints of things, but those aren't the style houses that are in that neighborhood. And I think if you went with some larger lots, in fact, if you went through and you actually built this to code, if you took away the cup and just did the rezoning, I'm being a GIS guy with parcels, I got busy and I didn't have time to put a slide in here for this, but there, but I think there might have been one of the one I sent earlier. But if you go back and build this thing to code, and you put the 80-foot fronts on there, you're not going to get 60 homes in there, you're going to get about 44 lots in there, and you're going to have to deal with stuff on the cul-de-sacs that they build, and they're going to have limited frontage on that. So it's going to get it down to about 44 parcels with two storm drain parcels, which by the way, are unfenced, and we've got kids, we talked a lot about the kids in the neighborhood, and we're in a wet weather season right now, and we've seen lots of rain. I guarantee you if there were retention ponds in there, they'd be filled, and they're unfenced. So that's a concern that we're worried about. And so I want you all to consider that, because as you put this together, as you're finalizing your plans and your thoughts, and I'm looking from, oh, I've got the pointer, I can go to my last slide. Can I actually talk from my last slide? I want to ask you to deny this rezoning and conditional use permit request in its present form. We're not against development. We'd love to have 15 new neighbors in there. If this plan came in with 15 houses to be built on similar layouts and plans, not the footprints of 1986 town ranch buildings like we live in, but something that has the effect that carries on what our citizens are used to seeing in there. And so if you built it to code, you could only get those 44. We still think that it violates the fire code. I looked at the fire code, and I called it up on my phone, and it says, and I'm looking at one that's dated, where did I see it? I'm going to run out of time here, but the 2021 fire code prevention, it was dated September 23, but its effective date was January 18, 2024. I don't understand, and my question to you on this is, is how can you say it's only maintenance and operation when it's already built? Don't you have to consider those kinds of things before you build? Just because you meet a requirement, the minimum requirement, doesn't mean it's a good requirement, it doesn't mean it's a good level. We want you to raise that level. We want it to be something that protects the community that we have. And again, we're not against development. If you came in here and said 15 homes, we would have been excited to have 15 new neighbors to invite to a barbecue. And so I want you all to consider that. And so what I see are poorly vetted cup, if that goes through, it can strain the infrastructure, disreplanting, and impact public safety and property values. And so as I said earlier, a cup is a privilege, it's not a right, and it should be only approved when it clearly benefits the town and the community. And we're not seeing evidence of that here. You're hearing a lot tonight from some citizens that are concerned about their neighborhood. I happen to be one of them, and I appreciate your time, and I look forward to hearing your spirited debate up there. It sounds like it might be a good debate. We were debating whether or not to head out, but we're going to stay around for the show. So I appreciate your time, thank you, and I hope you will seriously consider the power and the authority in the restraint you have by issuing a conditional use permit. I think it's a very valuable tool, and it needs to be judiciously handled. Thank you.
Hi. Mark Vest, 360 Summit Ridge. I would just like to redirect the quest, or the answer he gave us about the fire code. Again, he's, the developer is indicating that it's more of a recommendation. I've been in public safety for 25 years, roundabout, in one fashion or another, and generally speaking, fire codes are made because disasters happen, and those recommendations are usually from terrible experiences, and I don't see the need to make another terrible experience due to this. And the, I would also ask, the point made about these other zones would not have been approved, saying we made poor decisions, or these decisions were not exactly right this time, so I'm entitled to do it this time. I don't think that's an appropriate response. That's all.
Thank you.
My name is Rod Hall. I live at 435 Summit Ridge Road. If I may approach you all to hand out a copy of the code.
You might want that one back.
I'm not an engineer. I'm just a poor finance guy who relies on engineers to make sure things are done right and safely. I think I just heard, and I was very disappointed, heard someone from my own school ask you to ignore an appendix to the fire code. I know everybody has to make a living, but that's disappointing to me that someone who is actually on one of your boards that will hear the appeal about this fire code, asks you to ignore an appendix to that fire code. This is a building code. It's not really in the purview of the planning commission or the council. There, you do have an appeals board to look at building code issues, and then it'll be taken to the state. But I think you all should, you know, know that there, something's wrong when you see it.
We just had a big ice storm this week. Do you all remember? What happens if this tree right here falls over this road? How many, if it was over here, how many houses would be stuffed without a fire truck being in it too? I think you heard that.
Steve Hopper, 440 Summit Ridge. I wanted to bring out a point that Mr. Simonis brought up, and he said there are several communities in the town of Christiansburg that have just one way in or out, and thinking that would be fine for this one too. Now, one of the ones that he brought out was Winsong, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with Winsong, but there's about 35 homes in that, they're all senior citizens, they all have one car. The question I asked is, is Mr. Simonis, have they checked with the Life Bible College to see if we could put another entrance and exit from there? Because I think it's obvious from what you hear from everybody, that's what we need. That is crucial, really, in this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Suella Wolf, 175 Kimball Lane, again. I just wanted to comment on the rebuttal that he made on my concerns about the traffic on Kimball Lane, which flows over to Summit Ridge. The only way that would not be applicable would be if he could say that absolute construction will not be involved in any way in this proposed development. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 315 Summit Ridge, right beside the park. Have a couple main concerns. One is, I live at the highest elevation on the street probably, and I have drainage problems with water in my front yard now. And beside the park, it's mushy back through there, so drainage is an issue. No sidewalks, that's a blind curve there when you come around, and traffic moves pretty quick around there. And then getting out on Franklin is, can be a job sometimes. And people speed through there terribly, so. I haven't been here long enough to really come up with too much, but that's it. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any other final citizens' comments before we close the public comments section?
Barbara Stip, 765 Holly Drive. Has this developer not considered at all calming down to 30 units within this project, which would make much more sense for lots of reasons that we've discussed tonight? And we're not hearing any kind of a reduction, if anything, other ways to use other pieces of the property. There needs to be a compromise somewhere, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, all public comments have been closed, so you are welcome to stay. We, as a planning commissioner, are going to have discussions. We're going to have questions for our staff for clarification. We're going to have questions for Steve and the applicant. But I do ask that you withhold your desire to raise your hands or make comments, because at this time, there is no more public comments that are made. I do want to thank all of you for coming out. I do think we've lost a lot of our young children, but I think that some of our other young folks are here. I always want to encourage local involvement. So thank you for everyone, especially our younger folks who came out and were very passionate about sharing your experience. Anything that gets you involved in local government is a very good thing and talking about your community.
Good point, Gina.
So thank you. All right. Let me move on to item number three. Planning commissioners, before we actually discuss what's been ahead of us, let's look at the planning commission minutes from February 3. Are there any edits or concerns about the minutes from our last meeting?
I'm making motion to approve.
Oh, you love doing that. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I wasn't here.
You can still vote, but you're welcome to abstain, but you can vote even if it's accurate that you were not here.
Okay.
You approve? Okay, so that's unanimous. All right. Hey, that was nice and fast. Okay. Now we're going to move on to item number four, which is to discuss the rezoning request. And then I want, our conversation is going to revolve around both the rezoning request and the conditional use permit. If we want to make a recommendation this evening, we will take them separately, but I want the conversation to be together. So let me start with, what questions do planning commissioners have, or thought, initial thoughts you want to share? Please, Tom.
Okay. I have, I have what I originally thought was going to be a solution to the problem, but after hearing Simone's and some of the other things, I'm not sure, but so I'm going to proceed with it from a different tactic. I'm proceeding with it that it's still a suggestion, and I don't know if it's right to say or not, but as a commissioner, if it isn't followed, you will not have my vote. So having said that, and it's going to cover some of the items that have been covered, but from a different standpoint. I still want to read the loopholes, as I see it. The development lacks a second access road violating five state fire codes. Okay, we've talked about that, but I will address that further in a minute. Reasonable access to public roads meaning at least one egress point. However, the exact number can vary based on the size and design of the subdivision and local regulations. I think this meets that requirement. Each lot within a subdivision must have a reasonable means of egress and egress to a public road. That has to be addressed. That says a reasonable means. Factors like the size of the lot, traffic patterns, design of the subdivision, can influence the number of egress points allowed. I'm not totally sure I follow the contact points that you mentioned. Those are not ways out of the new location into the subdivision, I don't believe. So I'm not sure what those contact points represent, but they're not egress or ingress. There needs to have emergency vehicle. I don't care personally what the fire code in Virginia says. Common sense tells you that you're not going to come up Summit Ridge Road at any large, or at any speed for a fire issue that's going to happen at the end of the, at where the new project is. There has to be, in my mind, common sense says, there has to be a separate entrance, not for maintenance, but for the ongoing issues that will happen within that subdivision. There also needs to be a construction road. If you've driven down Summit Ridge Road, there's no curbing gutters. In some places, it's only 20 feet wide. Wide. And kids and other people walk, as you've heard tonight. There's a lot of children playing there, the bike gang, they call them. There's a lot of kids play along that street. The road cannot handle construction traffic. There has to be another way in for the construction traffic. Using your numbers, Simone's, 163 units and houses, that equals 326 vehicles, and that doesn't count teenagers that may have cars, or more than one car for a husband and wife. So that's just a ridiculous statement to make, that you think you're going to have all that traffic. You don't have to do a traffic study. That alone tells you that trying to get out on one road that leads to Franklin is going to be a nightmare, especially when you look at that road. As it says, and spots of it are really bad. They're not 20 feet wide. The road in itself will not sustain construction traffic on it. I have met with Mr. and Mrs. Bradshaw last Saturday, and one of the suggestions now that I would like to make to Mr. Woody is that he, the only way I would personally vote for this is if he blocked off Summit Ridge Road, right there where the driveway goes in. And I would suggest that maybe he make a playground out of it, which would help both sides, both the communities, and have another egress and ingress into that, which is only common sense. There has to be another vehicle, another pathway into that subdivision, period. Thank you.
Tom, let me make sure I'm understanding. Where would you like the playground to be? And then where would be the other egress?
The other egress, I believe, is up to Simone's and Woody, where they would want to put it, but not, they could go in and to talk to the people at the college or whatever. There just has to be another egress. And as far as the playground, that would be right at the end of Summit Ridge Road.
So right now where the connection is, you want recommending the playground where the connection is by lot 60 and 1?
Yes. Just have a playground there that, with walk-in abilities, so people could, from Summit Ridge can walk in there. And anyone that has any concerns, take a ride down Summit Ridge and tell them you're going to take construction traffic through there, and that the road's still going to be existing. It's not going to happen.
I want to make more time for planning commissioners, but Steve, that is one question that we talked about last time, was the possibility of a temporary construction access. Was that something you had an opportunity to look into?
We did. I mean, Mr. Woody doesn't control that property below us. That was what we talked about. Could a road be put in, basically, along the south side of the Summit Ridge existing lots? It's about a half mile. There would be, this is my opinion, and I know it's my opinion, but that would be a road that's right up against the back property lines of those homes, just on this side, you know, on the, not between the power poles and the fences of the Summit Ridge, but just on the other side of the power lines. That'd be a half mile, you know, construction road coming down through property. Mr. Woody doesn't own it. You know, so you've got dust, you've got debris, and you've got those trucks running right across the, you know, right behind those people's backyards, where you've got a public street. We do construction on public streets all over this town. Every subdivision that expands has got to bring the construction trucks.
Thank you. And sorry, I talked to you, but I forgot to ask you to use the microphone for our folks online. Thank you.
Are you going to be asking him questions? How is giving them?
Yeah, maybe we'll just give him the microphone or have him stand. Whatever's, okay. Commissioners, what other comments, questions do you have?
I'd like to address just a few of the comments that were made tonight, one being the frontage of the house that exists there. You know, you have the option of tearing it down, and you can add four more houses in there, or you can live with the house pointing in the wrong direction. My suggestion is you live with the house pointing in the wrong direction. The other comments that were made, poor decisions that may have been made by this planning commission. You have to understand what we do. We're not engineers, okay? We have to rely on engineers. We have to rely on VDOT. We have to rely on the town. We have to rely on a lot of people to understand exactly what's going on here. So it's not our opinion that we're making here. We're relying on key decisions, laws, codes, and we're not agreeing to anything that goes against code or that goes against laws. So as to poor decisions being made, I grossly disagree with that, and we take pride in the decisions that we make. As to the other comments that are being made, I agree with the traffic. This isn't the first development that we've had issues with, where the only way into a community is through a small community itself, and it adds a lot of safety issues. It wasn't not too long ago that we denied one off of 460, and it came through, again, a development, an older development, and again, kids on the road, bikes, walking, no sidewalks, very dangerous. And we decided not to approve that one, and that was because of the safety issues, and there was only one way in. So as to one way in and out of communities, we have a lot of those here in town. And yeah, different things happen, and there could be some serious issues. However, I happen to live in one of those neighborhoods, and I know if a tree goes across the one way in or the one way out, I'm going to have at least 10 neighbors out there with chainsaws, helping each other out, cutting our way out. So just my viewpoint on that. You're going to have some good neighbors, and I'll be quiet for a while.
So I have something, before I say that, though. Pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3112, Section B1, and 2.2-3115, Section H, I am declaring that I am a member of one of three or more businesses that may be affected by the agenda items. As an owner of an electrical and electronic security contractor, I am able to participate in this discussion and voting on this matter fairly objectively and in the public interest. On that note, a little bit, as a master electrician, I'm in the codes a lot, and I know it does sound a little bit odd and weird that part of the code is not really part of the code, but that's exactly when somebody brought up appendices, that was exactly, went off in my head typically, and it is the case of the statewide fire prevention code, the appendices are not part of the code. They're meant as guidelines, they're meant as, they are, but they are not enforceable part of the codes. And in fact, the Department of Housing and Community Development does note in, at the top of Appendix D for the statewide fire prevention code, "The provisions of this appendix are not part of this code and are provided only as a resource for local governments in consideration of the adoption of local fire prevention regulations." So absent, I don't think we can take the D107.1 into consideration unless that there's a town code that applies here, and I don't think there is. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, so, just my two cents about appendices. So.
So I don't mind the quarter acre lots. I think they're fine. I think it's what we get in new construction today, to make it affordable. You're not going to get half an acre lots unless you're over a half a million dollars for the house. It's just, it's not feasible in today's world for construction, nor is it feasible for most of our neighbors, our residents of Christiansburg to afford a half a million dollar house. So the lots are going to have to be smaller. We have a ton of people in town, a ton of people that want to buy property, and there's nothing to buy. There's literally no property. There's no inventory to buy in our area. What Mr. Woody's proposing is not outrageous. It fits a lot of what is being built, not just in our town, but other localities around us. And I do hate that you have to go through 60-some properties to get there. I live behind the farmhouse. There are three exits, Pepper's Ferry, North Franklin by the rec center, and then at the high school. There are 700, at least 700 single-family homes and over 600 townhouses in that development. We have three major ways to get in and out of that development, and it's fine. It works. There's traffic sometimes, but it's, this is not insane. I know it's your life, it's your home, and it's your neighborhood, but I don't think it's insane. We have, the town has to grow somewhere.
Let me ask this question. So you mentioned quarter acres, but some of these properties are 7,000, 7,500, which is less than a quarter of acre. Quarter of acre is 10,000?
It's 10,000.
Is 10,000. Have you all considered making the smallest 10,000? I imagine that impacts your bottom line, but has that been a discussion to decrease the number of units in this subdivision?
We looked at...
Thank you.
Microphone. Someone? It is?
Yeah, it just doesn't echo.
Just doesn't echo. Okay. We did look at a few different options. The 80-foot width requirement within the by right R1 really limits our density. And again, I mean, the way we looked at it is that, that R1 density of the quarter acre lots is what works out to be four units per acre, you know, and that's what we looked at, you know. And we're not asking for townhomes on this that are nine or 10 units per acre. We're at 3.2, 3.3, so we're still under the threshold. It's just a different housing type. It's a different lot type. So we looked at that. We looked at the R1 allowance, when you can take the average. It's a cluster average, and it's still a by right way to develop, and that knocks it down to 8,500 square foot lots. So we looked at that, and if we took the house out and we put our stormwater underground, which we do in many cases in development, I think we ended up with 54, 56 lots. So, you know, it made more sense for us to do regular stormwater management and keep the house that's there, and reduce our lot sizes to keep our density about where we could get a little bit more than what we could get with the cluster, you know, design, and still have it be single-family detached with a multitude of lot sizes. And I think that's what, you know, a little bit of what gets lost is, we do have some, you know, the lots 6, 7, 6 through 11, and then, you know, 21 through maybe 25, 26, that are at that smaller, but everything else is bigger. I mean, we go up to about 18,000 square feet on some of these lots. So it's not, it's not a cookie cutter 7,500 square foot of 60 lots.
I know that you all have properties where the storm management retention ponds are not fenced. Is that something that you all would consider doing, given the concerns about how many children are in this neighborhood of fencing those?
We can, I can ask. So normally, if you're doing a wet pond, so a retention pond, where you've got water that's standing in there all the time, you know, you get a rain event, it fills up higher, and then it drains down to a permanent pool, you have to have those fenced. Areas where you're out of sight, so for example, if you've got a big drop-off in a subdivision, we did this over in Windsor Estates, one of the first subdivisions we did here. We've got, we've got two ponds in that subdivision. One is not fenced, one is. And the one that's fenced sits behind, for example, imagine these are the lots. We had a stormwater facility kind of back in the back of the lot, so if a child or somebody went into that, you wouldn't see them, you know. You wouldn't be able to see them because it was, it's not in plain view of the, of the road. So we fenced that from a safety perspective. Commercial, you know, commercial components, when you've got the public in and out, a lot of those are fenced. Normally, most of our subdivisions in town, single-family, even townhomes, don't have fenced ponds, but it's something I can certainly ask Mr. Woody about if he'd be, if he'd be open to doing it. The problem that we run into is you can't, they have to be chain link, you know, so that's, it's not attractive. You know, it's got to be something you can easily see through, that you can't have any kind of, it can't be a privacy fence, because if somebody is in there, you can't see them. So again, it's not the prettiest thing to look at when you do fence those ponds. So what we try to do is we try to discourage, you know, discourage use of that area, we'll landscape around it, things like that, but we try not to fence them if they're dry. And then again, these are dry ponds, so, you know, typically 24 hours after a storm event, they're dry. You know, they're not holding water past that storm event.
Thank you.
I have one more question. I have one more question. It's for staff. It was brought up with absolute construction. Are, are they zoned properly to do business there? And if you don't know the answer, that's okay. Just put it on the agenda to take a look at.
Was it at the end, was it at the end of that road?
Kimball.
Kimball.
Which I'm sure it's probably agriculture.
It is agriculture. It depends on the development and...
Just, just put it on, maybe something to look at, you know, just double check. Won't be the first business that was in a zone that was not legal. Let's see, the other question I had, Steve, stormwater runoff, all the studies, all the qualifications, the state qualifications, the town qualifications, they just can't exist unless they follow all the codes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. In which we do those studies, and as I mentioned, I think last time, sometimes they're to the advantage of the neighboring neighborhoods to the extent, to the extent that if you do have a water issue, it can actually help control it by pushing it to these water drainage ponds. I think that's right.
That's correct, yeah. And that's what I was saying earlier, you know, our development will direct all of our runoff away from Summit Ridge. Now, we can't do anything about the problems down, the gentleman that spoke, I guess towards the end that said there's flooding down towards his house and around the park, we can't do anything about that. You know, again, that's, that's the existing drainage in the road system that's there, but we won't exacerbate that problem because we'll have curb and gutter, and we'll have sidewalks and drop inlets and everything else that'll be directing all that to our stormwater facilities.
And I appreciate the public bringing that up to the commission and up to staff, to the extent if it is a draining, drainage issue, that we can take a look at it, but not as part of this situation. And so goes the lighting also on Summit Ridge Road. It has nothing really to do with tonight's public hearing or public concerns, but it can be looked at by, by staff. So I appreciate that, too.
I do have a question for staff. So I drove by, and I was actually with some friends, and one of the very first things that was noticed was how that park is not fenced. And as someone with children, I tend to look for parks that are fenced, so that way I don't have to be Hawkeye the whole time and can breathe for a minute. Is there a reason that that park is not fenced? What would need to be done in order to fence that park regardless of what decision is made tonight? How do y'all make that decision about fencing in parks?
We can ask.
Yeah, I would appreciate that. I just, in general, because that road is, is busy, as a, as a parent, I was, I think it was cool how many kids said they'd use that park, but as a parent and as anyone who's over there, I would think that there'd be a little bit more peace of mind if that park was fenced in general, but especially if this is recommended and there's going to be construction trucks, that would be helpful. Speed bumps were asked about if, if this moves forward, and we've talked about speed bumps before.
Yep, I brought it up last meeting.
Yeah, so how do we go about getting speed bumps on roads that are busy or traffic is flowing too quickly?
The street committee.
The street committee. Is that something that, like, we make a motion to the street committee to consider, or y'all talk to street committee?
I can just talk to a street committee.
I guess a couple more comments that I have. Again, as Ms. Sowers has said, the development looks very appealing. It's got a variety of houses. It's bigger than the normal patio homes that we've approved in the past. I like the variety of the houses, the two stories, the one story. The lot sizes, pretty traditional for the last developments that we've approved. They are getting smaller. We just don't have the land available, but they fit the needs of the town and the people coming to Christiansburg. With that said, I'm not sure if I'm leaning, as far as Tom is, on the cutting off the entrance to, to the one road, Summit Ridge Road coming in, but I am leaning very heavily to looking at the Life University possibility and pushing back to the developer and Mr. Woody to, to pursue that option, especially with the construction traffic, to the extent I understand the property next to them. Mr. Woody doesn't own, that's a tough putt to get traffic flowing out onto that property and the dust and all that, understand that. But sure would be a nice situation to, to go out through the Life University with construction traffic going that way rather than through the town, and once the development is built, you will have two easy ways in and out of the development. I think that's, that's weighing heavily on my decision. I think the development is great. Everything's being addressed, with the exception of the safety of the one road in and the concern for the kids on the street. There's no sidewalks. They're used to playing in this, in the streets. Yes, we can put speed bumps in, we can slow the traffic down, but two ways in and out is, I think it's going to almost be a must.
Thank you. That's kind of where I'm at also, Steve. I want to clarify that I'm not opposed to the subdivision. I also think it looks pretty well in the way you're talking about with curb and gutters. What I am opposed to is the common sense of only having one entryway, that it's not a proper entryway. I mean, that street is hard enough to live on, much less undergo all the traffic. You're talking 300 some vehicles.
This one reminds me of Hans Meadow in a lot of ways, an established neighborhood, proud neighborhood, and then a new development being requested and without, without, you know, its own distinct entrance.
Right.
And so I think, I think that the Route 8 entrance should be, should be pursued so Town and Country can maintain the character of their established neighborhood, and this nice new neighborhood could do the same.
Yep, that's the way I feel. There needs to be another ingress egress, just for common sense.
Can I make a statement?
Yeah.
The only thing I would, I, I'm happy to talk to Mr. Woody, and he, he may know the folks at, at the Bible College. We're happy to have that conversation. I would just, I would just, I feel incumbent, I have to say, we are meeting regulations. You know, if we can't design, if we can't work with our clients to design to town code, to VDOT code, to the building codes, how do we, how do we consult and continue to build and grow the town of Christiansburg? I, I understand Tom as far as the common sense approach. I, I get that 110%, but, you know, with the examples I was showing earlier from the SSAR guidelines, those are VDOT guidelines, you know, so by that, by that logic, by the logic to quote common sense, this last section of Summit Ridge that most of these folks live in should never have been built. It's over 30 lots, and it's only got one way in and out, you know, if you take off that connection to Kimball. So, you know, and again, it's not just, you know, it's not just coming out Summit Ridge at Franklin. There is the other, there is the other route on Kimball that will take you out, Rose, maybe. I can't remember that other name. But I, I just want everybody to understand, we can talk to Life, that's a private development that we have no control over. And even if we got access for construction traffic, getting a full public right-of-way through there, that, that's a decision that will impact that, that property for the rest of its being, you know, and I just want everybody to understand, we'll, we'll, we'll talk to them, but, I mean, I think the merits of the project as it stands today is meeting the town code. We're asking for, we are asking for the planned housing development. We're meeting VDOT standards. We're meeting the fire code, you know, as Mike mentioned, the code that does, isn't applicable. But it's, it's hard, it's hard for me to hear, go talk to a private property owner because I can't support it if you don't get somebody else to do something for you. If, if we're designing and we're expanding our subdivisions the way the code allows and encourages us to in the comprehensive plan, I'm not sure what else we can do if we've got a neighbor that says, we understand, but, you know, we don't, we don't want your traffic coming through our private property. It makes, it makes it difficult moving projects forward.
It's not just the traffic. It's common sense, a safety issue of traffic on that road with kids playing along that road. That's what concerns me. If it was just the traffic, you might have, you might have a way out. And I know what the guidelines say, and honestly, I can't control the guidelines. That was before my time. What I can control is how I vote now. And I could not, in good conscience, vote knowing that there's kids that play along that road all the time, and that road, as I stated, and you can go out and measure, I'm sure Mr. Bradshaw will be happy to show you where, that that road's only 20 feet wide. That's not wide enough for construction traffic and other traffic and children playing on that road. It's just not safe. So I don't care what the guidelines state. I'm talking about safety and what is right for that community.
I just, I do want to remind the planning commission that, that part of our role is to look at the ordinance. It is to look at the codes. It is to look at what the future of the Christiansburg community is to be. There is a difference between the planning commission and the town council. So I do think it's important to remember that we do have to look and say what makes sense code-wise. Town council, so let's say planning commission says yay or nay, yes, we think it's in alignment with the ordinances, with the codes, with safety regulations based on what we know. Town council could then say, yeah, you're right, it checks all the boxes. However, we don't like it. We don't like the idea of one way in and out, even if it is safe, even if it is in conformity with future land use map. So I think it's important that we, as commissioners, do remember what our role is, which is very different than what town council's role is, and that is to look at what the ordinance says, the codes say, does it align with future land use map, does it not? I do think that there are valid concerns about the one way in, one way out. Do I think that this safety regulation not applying to future construction is kind of absurd? Absolutely. Like, I mean, from a personal standpoint, yes, but the reality is, that's what the code says, that it doesn't apply to new construction, that it's a, an appendix. Do we have concerns about the possibility of safety, one way in, one way out? Does it align with what VDOT says, though, are the standards? And from what I have read, from what's been presented tonight, it does appear, as silly as we might think it might be, that these stopping points can count. That is what VDOT says. So I'm not saying that, you know, that means to vote you recommend or to vote that you don't recommend. I just want to remind commissioners what our roles are. Staff, is there anything I said about our roles that would be helpful to clarify as we are thinking about taking action? Okay. So I want to make sure that we understand our role, which is very hard, because when, when you all come before us, one, you make very valid points. You all are looking at codes and ordinances. I love the environmental pieces that you all brought up. I mean, as a, as a person, as a community member, that really speaks to me. The hard part is, as commissioners, we have to take the, the kids' heartstrings that, as a mother, like, that definitely impacts me and kids playing, but I have to look at that and then say, what does, what does the Christiansburg comprehensive plan say? And you all brought some really good points about that. So I, I just think that's important to remember, that we have to balance what you're saying with what our roles are, because you all do bring up a lot of valid points, and you also bring up a lot of just citizen concerns that if it was my neighborhood, I could probably very much relate to. So commissioners, we have to balance that, okay?
Yes. And thank you for...
I grew up in this neighborhood, and I remember when I, as a kid, it said, it was a big sign, it said Town and Country Estates as you came in. And Mr. Wrightinger, Nelson Wrightinger, had the farm, horses and cattle on his farm, and then this neighborhood that he built. So I think at the time, and probably now, the folks that are there, they thought, this is our inclusive neighborhood, it's going to stop at the end of Summit Ridge where it kind of narrows out there. So I, I think, I think that the neighborhood itself was, was planned for just those 60 houses. The Briarwood Drive pinch point, I dealt with that in 1977, and it is way worse now. So if you add on, add on more homes, that's going to be a problem. There really is a blind spot there, so, from experience.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah, so Mark, with, with that comment, I guess it was brought up, there was no VDOT study that was made, but there was none that was requested. And so I got to ask, what dictates the requirement of a VDOT study?
It's a couple different thresholds. So there, the town has a traffic form that we fill out with every rezoning or conditional use permit that, that we estimate based on the IT manual that I talk about, I think, at every one of our meetings, the traffic generation that's coming from, from your development. And, and there are thresholds, the town states in there, that if, that a residential development, I think if it, if it exceeds 100 vehicles during the peak hour, so that, and we've talked about this before, too, those peak hours in the morning or the afternoon, it kicks into the requirement. For a commercial development, non-residential project, it's, it's greater than 250 vehicles per hour. So our development is 56, you know, based on the, on the trip generation.
Could you remind me, does that include those surrounding neighborhoods as far as the 300s?
We're not required to, because it's, it's the impacts that you're creating from your development.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Even if you're kicking it over the 200s?
That's, that's the regulations we work with, Mr. Bernard. And if, and if it were, if it kicks over into a bigger threshold, I can't remember the number off the top of my head, that, because normally, I'll say this, if we, if we do get into a situation where we're over that 100 trips, you know, per hour, there are different thresholds of what a traffic study looks like. You know, the town could ask, hey, you're barely over it, and we're not concerned about you checking to see if a signal's warranted, but why don't you look to see if a turn lane's warranted, or, you know, things like that. But again, that, that comes from staff after we've submitted the application, or when we have a pre, you know, a pre-submital meeting, which we do with every rezoning, we sit down and we meet with staff and say, this is what we're looking at, what do we need to think about before we, before we submit our applications? So if, if there would have been traffic concerns from the town engineering standpoint, we would have been requested to do something. We would have provided that before we submitted.
Yeah, I think that's where I was getting to, Steve. You know, we're no traffic engineers, we're not VDOT. We rely on the town engineers, the town street committee to, to look at it. Does it warrant a VDOT study? So, thank you.
Yeah, and I, we'll just add one more thing, Madam Sheriff, if it's okay. Just back to, back to our streets and our, and the common sense piece of it. You know, VDOT had, in those documents I provided, you know, that zero to 200 lots or 2,000 trips a day. You know, again, that's, those correlate, you know, 200 lots, you know, gets you close to that 200 trips a day. They don't say what kind of trips those are. They don't say if it's commercial, they don't say if it's residential, they don't say if it's a townhouse or a single family or a multifamily. They're looking at that as, as just, as just trips. What they also don't say is, that's only if you have a 30-foot road. VDOT, we can take VDOT roads down to 20 feet, I believe, today. We could go out and design a 20-foot road in, in VDOT as a VDOT road. So they don't say it's zero to 200 if you're at a certain road width. It's just a straight, it's just a straight ratio that we have to work with. And, and again, the VDOT guys are smarter than all of us in the room, I guess. You know, they, they come up with these guidelines and set it based on, as I said, what they started in 2009 and revised in 2011. So, you know, again, there, there is, there is science, there's trip generation, there's engineering behind these recommendations. And as, as Mr. Johnson, you said, that's what you have to rely on. That's what we have to rely on, too, as designers. We have to design to those standards, or the town can't approve our plans.
Just to give my two cents, I, upfront, I don't have any, I don't have any objections to the actual development itself. My main concerns with this, it stays on the speed bumps. I really do feel like speed bumps will work. Like, like Commissioner Johnson, I live in a neighborhood where it's one way and you have a lot of traffic. There's no, I mean, there's only one way in, one way out. There are kids that play on the street, people do speed, and, but, you know, it's not impossible. And with the current need of the town, we do need housing. And with the current need of the town, we do need housing. Just looking at the, the, the concerns that people brought up on Summit Ridge with the lighting, the, you know, the possible speeding. Those are my main concerns is addressing the lighting there right now, which I guess that would be something that we can deal with with staff and AEP. The stormwater, I would feel a lot better if we did fence those stormwater management facilities or those dry ponds, as you say. We typically ask about the use of emergency vehicles coming through. That's something that myself and Tom usually ask. More so you than me, but, those are things that I always take into consideration when I'm looking at a development. It's not impossible for this to work, but thank you for showing, showing up and, you know, explaining your concerns because we represent, I mean, we're here to listen to the citizens and the town residents. And, um, you know, we're going to make the recommendation based on the information we have. It'll be up to town council to make that, that final decision. But, and we do recommend you show up to these town council meetings to say everything you said here, you say to town council. That's what they get elected for. But I'm, I echo what you said, Commissioner Sowers, we do need the housing. I have no real objections other than, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to stick with my speed bumps and making sure those stormwater management facilities are at least fenced in. I don't care how ugly it looks, it keeps children out, because I have young children, I have four children total. They get, if there's a place you think they're not going to go, they will, they will go. So.
And I don't, I don't think the fencing will be a big deal. I think we can probably accommodate that.
And that's a, that would be a big sticking point with me. But I don't think this isn't totally impossible. I would, I do understand the one-way in, one-way out deal. But I, I think this will, I, I feel this will work. I think it'll add to the growth of town, of the, of the town in a positive manner. It'll aesthetically look decent. These are different than the patio homes that we will be, that we've been approving recently, so. But those are my main concerns is the speed bumps. I definitely want to see speed bumps. I know Summit Ridge, I've been down that road many times. It is, it does need some work, but I'm not sure how, you know, we can look at it as, as staff, if you can look into that a little further. But that's all I, that's all I have to say about.
So instead of speed bumps, if there was a way to do more stop signs? Speed bumps are going to get tore, or they'll tear your cars up, but the snowplows will also tear them up.
Yeah, I mean, stop signs, something that'll slow the tra, something that'll slow the traffic down. I'm not opposed to stop signs either, but I mean, a.
You know, a three-way stop at, is it Briarwood, Briarwood that comes around that we were talking about? I mean, a three-way stop right there would slow traffic as they're, you know, coming past the, you know, past the park, for sure.
Of course, that would come from the town. That's not a condition you could put here.
Yes.
We've had the traffic study come up almost every single time that we have one of these. And it's always the same, that the, the builder follows the rules. But it does, it doesn't take into account the houses that are already there. Is that something that is able to be changed? Or like, does town engineering, Christiansburg town, set that in the sense that they do not have to consider the 60 homes that are already there? Or is that set by the state and the town of engineering enforces it? How is that policy set to determine which houses are considered in the traffic study? That it's currently only the new ones versus the new plus the current?
That's a, that's a concern of mine too. I mean, we've had this.
It's every time.
It's every time and we always ask the same questions. Well, okay, this development is one thing, but what about these five others that?
You know, obviously, if, if we trip the threshold with a project, we have, and we have to do a study. We are required to take, and obviously, everything, you know, no matter where it's coming from, any direction that would be impacting an intersection, you know, that we would be, that our project would be a part of. So we would look at it, but to your, to your point, as far as just adding that traffic into whether the threshold is crossed. You know, that's, the town of Blacksburg has, I believe, verbatim, the exact same form that the town of Christiansburg has with the same thresholds, because we.
Everything that I read concerning the ingress and egress roads said that it's up to the local municipality. So Christiansburg could develop their own rules and regulations for that within the guidelines. Is that correct?
Correct.
And Madam Chair, you, you are absolutely correct. We've run into this so many times. If you look at 114 just alone, you've got apartment complexes out there. You had the villas that were there already, but yet you had townhomes, apartment complexes, and now we're putting in a town center. So you start adding all that together and just doing a one VDOT study on just the development of one property, it doesn't take into consideration all that flowing on to 114. So that, that is a real concern that we've struggled with in the past. So your point is well taken.
Excuse me, is that something that you want us to look into and speak with engineering about as far as like traffic?
Please do, that is, it's been around for years and we've asked the same questions for years and.
And we can touch base, Fred, because I think there's a couple of other things we've sort of chatted about too. So we can have future planning commissions to chat more about that. But let me ask this question. Let's say, let's say that the trip was activated, that, that a study was required. What would even be a potential outcome? Like, what would, I mean, would they just say, put a stoplight in? Would they say, don't put the houses in? What are, what are the possible, I mean, because we can say activate it, but if it's just going to say, here's what that means and there's no potential action items with it, is it even worth considering? What, Steve, what would be, what are some typical outcomes when a study's done?
So typically, you know, on a, on a subdivision road like this, we would be looking to see if a turn lane would be necessary. A right-hand turn lane going, you know, towards Pilot and turning right into the subdivision or a left-bound, you know, coming from Pilot into town. I can't imagine there'd be a left turn lane warrant because that's, that's based on the, when we look at turn lanes, it's not just the turning movements, but it's the traffic that's on the road currently going both directions. Especially if you're taking a left. So how much traffic is going out of, you know, out of Christiansburg towards Pilot in the, in the morning or the evening? And are we backing traffic up on Franklin to make a left into Summit Ridge? But realistically, there's probably not a lot of traffic, you know, coming from Pilot back into Summit Ridge. I'm sure there's some. But all that, all that is figured, because VDOT, VDOT has daily trip data that they publish every year for all the, all the roads in town. So we use that. And they give a directional factor that tells you when during those peak hours the heaviest direction is. So likely in the morning, the heaviest direction's going to be going towards town. In the evening, it's going to be coming back, you know, out of town. So we, we look at all that, but in this case, you know, the, I, I can't imagine, I mean, it took years for us to get to a threshold on Pepper's Ferry where a light was warranted. That was with Clifton Town Center after, as Mr. Johnson was saying, Clifton was built out and the Adams on Pepper's Ferry. So there's virtually no way we would trip a signal threshold at Summit Ridge and Franklin. But, you know, if it got, if it got bad enough that we needed to look at turn lanes, that's probably, would be the, the only reasonable outcome that would, you know, that would likely be there. And that would, again, probably just be a right turn lane. And that's if the right of ways there, you know, in order to get it in on Franklin right there. Otherwise, you'd have to, you know, find, you know, get land from whoever owns that corner parcel, you know, on the, on that side.
And I think that's important too, because it's not like we're saying that a trip study would mean that the subdivision is a no-go. It's not like the trip study would say, or VDOT would say, that's too many homes, which I think is important to consider. Like, where, where would be the no-gos on information that we don't have? Other questions, comments, commissioners? Let me go through my notes. I am curious. I live on a, on a tight road that is high traffic, that people park on both sides. And I always wonder, and this could be for Summit Ridge, how do you get no parking on one side? You know, I, I did drive through and, and I was thinking like, how does this compare to the road I live on, which is always really tight for buses, UPS drivers to get through? But if traffic did increase, having cars on each side, some parents talked about challenger to the children getting to buses and walking? What, what does that look like to have a no, no parking on one side?
That would be a street committee.
Street committee. I'm going to become friends with the street committee chair. Okay.
You should be on that committee.
Don't add more. Okay. Okay, but I think that, and I know that that can be inconvenient to homeowners, because you're like, if you want people to park. But it, it can make traffic move faster. It can help with emergency vehicles getting through if you do not have cars on both sides. I always worry about that with my street. And I, I did experience that on Summit Ridge, what that would be like, okay. Let me, okay, let me ask this. Other questions or comments commissioners want to state or have for any, for anybody?
I don't think so.
We will vote on the, on the rezon, the CUP separately?
Yes, so, because one is, if one's a no-go, the other one is dead in the water. But let me ask this question. Our commissioner, so traditionally, just so you all know, public hearing, one meeting, discussion, the second meeting, that's like the second meeting, which is tonight, we'd normally take action. Our commissioners in a place to take action tonight, is there anything that would change, any additional information that would change your mind that can actually be accessed by the March 3 meeting?
Yeah, that's, that's the big one for me. Can I ask one question on that? What would planning commission, and again, I'm just, I'm spitballing here. You know, if, if the Bible College said, we won't grant an access for people to, this isn't going to handle all of your concerns, Tom, but if they would give us an emergency access, we've done that on several subdivisions, if they would give us access, you know, we could, we could, we'll be building it to the property line. They've already got a little dirt road, it looks like, that kind of goes back up to a, to a shed up there. If it's something, they might give us the ability to gravel as, as just an emergency access? If, if they, because again, I, I'll be surprised if they would be open to putting a public road all the way through their property. But would, would that sway anybody one way or the other? I mean, anything's better than nothing, I mean, as far as a separate access. But I can't, obviously, I can't promise anything, but if, if they say no to one, you know, and we went back and said, well, what would you think about this?
Do you have an example somewhere where that we might look at one of those? I think near a village has one towards the top of the hill. Who else has one?
I know we had one approved for a project we're doing in Montgomery County, just down Pepper's Ferry Road. It's not, it's not built yet, but similar to that, we had just one access point out on, on the 114. But we've got a emergency access that will build to the, to the driveway that goes up to Grace, Grace Life, is that right? What used to be the Baptist Church.
So normally, that would be like two poles in the ground or a gate that only like the fire department can, can access. Is that what, as you're talking about?
That would be, yes, ma'am.
The community proposed having fewer homes there. I think someone actually said cut it in half. Actually, can't do that. But would there be, you know, same-sized houses, larger lots? Would that be a compromise? To cut down on the numbers, reduce the traffic?
I mean, honestly, Mr. Cur, I, I don't know what the right number would be. You know, if we said, yeah, we could cut two lots off, I don't think that moves a needle. We're not going to cut 30 lots off. I mean, there's a reason we tried to get, you know, what we can get in here. Again, as we've, as we've discussed, to, to build the product at the price point we're talking about.
So to answer your question, for me to answer your question, emergency access would be favorable. And I'll, I'll throw the caveat on top of that to all the comments that the commissioners have made. No parking, speed bumps, all the safety issues that we can come up with to protect that way in and out could help. And, and to your point, and the commissioners made the point, we follow the regulations, we listen to VDOT, we listen to the engineers, we're following code, we're doing everything, you know, and we're not trying to tie your hands, but we're just trying to look out for, for the safety of the people. And emergency access, no parking, speed bumps, any other kind of safety issues, the three-way stop.
The stormwater, fencing around the storm.
Fencing around that. All, all safety issues really is the key point. I think that I'm taking away tonight that the community is, is great. I mean, the development looks great. The density, yeah, it's more than in the neighboring neighborhood, but it's not outlandish. We could put townhomes in there. We could put apartments in there, you know, and certainly don't want to do that. And so, yeah, those, those are my, my points. So emergency access, I know we've done it, we've looked at it before. That, that might be very helpful.
So I can, I can commit that we'll, we'll, we'll talk to life and see, see what their, their favorability would be to something on that, on that end. And I can, I'll just go ahead and commit tonight for Roger. He might yell at me in the morning, but we'll, we'll fence the ponds. We'll go ahead and, and we'll get that updated on the master plan before we go to council if you all take action tonight. Okay. The speed bumps, the, the stop signs, anything else on the existing Summit Ridge, again, that's, that's nothing we, we can do.
Right, I understand.
But, so again, that kind of ties our hands a little bit. I mean, that's if, if the town, the town's got to, kind of puts us in an awkward position. The town's got to agree to do something on an existing road. But, you know, I, I think, I think, I agree, it makes sense, especially, I really like the, however, we got to the, the three-way stop. That probably makes the most sense, because then you're not tearing up plows with, with speed bumps. And there's some other things that we've done, that I've seen done. We just did one in Blacksburg that we've got, we've got a raised crosswalk. You know, so again, that, that works a little bit better with plows, but even just, you know, striping, you know, striping crosswalks at different points, even if it's not raised or, or crosswalk or speed bump, a speed table or anything you want to call it. Even if it's just striped, you know, to get, to, to let people know, let drivers know, there are pedestrians that could be crossing, you know, as you go over to Briarwood to walk down to Ridgewood. So there, there are things that can be done, you know, beyond just putting a speed bump in that could help slow up traffic in there.
And I would like to echo the chair tonight that, again, our job as commissioners is to review all the facts and the laws, the, everything that goes into this. And it's our recommendation to town council. So we're not elected officials, so we're just going to go by what we know, the facts, what's been presented, what the law is. And then town council has the final decision on it. So they're your elected officials and they have, they have your ear.
Other commissioners, desire to take action tonight, desire to hold to see if there's any chance of an emergency gravel access? If not, even a full right-ofway through Bible Life College? I mean, I'd wait for that.
I'll say one concern I have with full right-ofway is creating a cut-through, would that create more traffic down Summit Ridge? You know, that's a pretty attractive cut-through. If I'm on Route 8, yeah, yeah. How many lights am I going to skip to get down to the western part of Roanoke Street that way?
I believe we did have a neighbor that mentioned that at the last meeting.
All right. So what I am hearing is that we will not be taking action this evening. We have our meeting on Mon, our next meeting's Monday, March 3. Okay, so this is non-traditional for a planning commission. We typically take action and make a recommendation before town council has their public hearing. We have done this in the past though, where town council will have their public hearing. So just like you all had a public hearing with us, they do not have discussion the same night they have a public hearing. So what happens is, they have their public hearing for this on Tuesday, February 25. We will take action on March 3 and they will have that recommendation before they vote on Tuesday, March 11. Okay, so the information that you put together for tonight was on point, by the way. I really appreciate it. the way. I really appreciated the packet that I had to read, I really appreciated the way that y'all came and spoke, and very concise. If there's anything you want to add to that, based on the discussion you heard from planning commission tonight, the response that you heard from the applicant, you're welcome to update your information and go to the Town Council meeting on Tuesday, February 25, for the public hearing. We, commissioners, are going to take action on this on Monday, March 3, so we look forward to hearing if there's any conversation with about a full right-of-way, or a emergency access. It sounds like, Mr. Woody, y'all are committed to maintaining the number of density, so I just want to be clear, it's not like we're expecting you to come back with a decrease of planning commissioners, just know that. It's not like we're going to hear that March 3, and they're going to drop down to 30 units. Is there anything, commissioners, that I missed that we're expecting to hear from March 3?
Steve, do you think you'll have an answer for the public hearing at Town Council?
I don't know. I don't know who it...
Yeah.
The college itself is based in California. I don't even know if there's somebody local that can make this decision. So again, it concerns me that we're leaning on a private developer that's not even, or a private owner that's not even local here to Christiansburg on this project, but we'll do what we can.
And I do, I want to clarify, what I am gathering from commissioners, is that this is not a make or break for every commissioner. This is a, you're willing to have the conversation, so we're willing to wait to see what the response is. Some commissioners, it sounds like it might be a make or break, but I don't think it's a make or break for every commissioner. So I do want to be, I'm looking at everybody.
It will not change my vote.
It's not for me, but...
Yeah, but I think just having the information.
Okay.
So I want to, I want to make that clear, too.
We, not that this matters, I may not be here that night, I may be out of town, but if I am, I will provide everything in writing to you all for that meeting.
All right. Any other conversation about this before we proceed to other business? All right, thank you all for staying, we really appreciate your time, you're dedicated. If you want to come back and hear the decision on March 3, you're welcome to, we also livestream. So if you're, you want to do that?
Not a problem, not a problem.
I get it. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, our meeting is not adjourned, but while people are exiting, yeah, please, you can ask a question. You always have public comments at the beginning of every planning commission meeting, so you are welcome to come next meeting and say anything you want for five minutes. Yep. Correct. They will have all the information before they make their decision. So they won't, they don't discuss, they don't do anything, but they will have our recommendation in advance of them making their decision, and having their discussion. How we had a discussion tonight, they'll do that at their second meeting, and that will include our recommendation.
Public hearing next week, so they'll view it. So they'll hear all the comments and all our comments.
They usually watch us.
Yes.
I don't fault you for wanting to look at every opportunity. Yes, thank you for your time. Thank you for all your organized notes and your research. All right, planning commissioners, is there any other business? Any other comments, staff?
I just wanted to mention that there are some code changes that we would like to bring to you all, maybe next meeting, just to kind of put it out there that those will be coming.
Do we have anything else on the March 3 meeting, other than action here and some of those possible code changes? Do we have any public hearings?
No.
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 I would like Hill to note the time.
Yeah, I know.
It's his fault.
I know. It never happened when I was up there.
I'm pretty sure, because he went on vacation when we had big public hearings. I would also like to thank Felix. I appreciate that everyone stayed within their five minutes in honor of the time.
Yeah, thanks.
All right, so next meeting, some code changes, and we will take action. And then I'm going to look through our last couple of planning commission meetings, and I know there's a couple times that we said, can we chat about this, can we chat about that? So I'll get those organized, and maybe we can start looking at having some more conversations, if there's anything that we need to be educated on, or action that we could take to sort of facilitate some mini grievances we've heard over years related to some of our policies. And maybe it's just educating them, and the policy is perfect as it is, or maybe it can be adapted. So, anything else?
I would also recommend, so we're planning for the commissioners' training for this year, and we'd love to see you all there.
The new, the...
Yeah, for the regional commission.
What day is that one?
The regional commission.
Have you picked the date?
That's a good event.
Yeah, that is.
That's a really good event.
It's a very good event.
No date yet?
There is a date, we're just not, I know this is April, but I don't know.
You'll let us know when?
I will let you know when.
All right.
I would like to thank, I would like to thank Jean Anne and Felix for a well-run meeting, thank you.
Way to start by fire.
Yeah.
All right.
Way to go.
Well, hey, tomorrow's a snow day. All right, with that, everyone be safe, enjoy a snow day, if you get it. I don't know if the town's open or closed tomorrow, but with that, we adjourn at 9:36 PM.
Thank you.
How do you do, Snow Day?
We don't know.